No more swearing.
Here we are. Hi, I'm Mayor Mary Ann Kloss and I welcome you to our program tonight. We are on Monday, January the 10th, 2022. This is a study session and will includes an executive session for our city council members. So I'll call us together and ask Courtney to validate our competition.
It appears that all council members with the exception of Scott Moore are present at the moment.
That's great. Thank you very much. All right. This is set up as such, and we don't have individuals that I'm seeing to have to explain it any further. There was never expectation to set for public comment because of the special nature of us meeting. I welcome you to the new year. I welcome Dean H. as our newest elected member. And I am very excited and very hopeful for kind of a brand new start with this team and launching in on some extraordinarily important work that the city is embarking on. And I think that what Dean and I wanted to accomplish was an opportunity that we come together and really feel comfortable amongst ourselves to kind of clarify some issues, make sure we're clear about roles and responsibilities and, you know, throw out some of the tough questions, the concerning questions to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're all understanding and appreciating kind of how do we go about doing our business? And how do we communicate and work through issues together? We have a lot of work, a long journey, and it's going to be really important that we kind of build ourselves together as a new team and have really good clarity going forward. And we're blessed to have some experts in the field to help guide us tonight. And I will have them introduce themselves, but Anne Bennett from WCIA. And we have our interim legal services team between Kenan Williams and Steve DeGiulio joining us as well. And we hope that this is helpful, but we do have planned pauses so that you can ask clarifying questions and make sure that things that might be on your docket certainly do get addressed. So I hope that we're able to kind of be, you know, engaged and thoughtful. And I know that we want to keep this, you know, from seven to nine o'clock is kind of our game plan. So we'll be mindful of the timing and if there's just so much and we got much more to do, then we'll, we'll stop it and figure out a next game plan. We don't have to shove it all in tonight, but we want to get a really good solid start going forward. So I think that was what I wanted to kind of start off with. I will refer to Dean Hamakovich as Dean H. if that's okay. And otherwise, if I say Dean, I mean, or we'll give you a new nickname, Dean H. I don't know if you have one or not, but.
Teenage is great. Thank you.
Okay. And then, so Dean, my Dean, is there anything you'd like to say at the beginning? Or maybe you'd like to set any further introductions and we'll get going?
I just think that we, we tried to set this up as an opportunity to have a set format with an overall agenda and then a presentation and then kind of the opportunity to go into some executive session to talk about specific instances and things. So Anne, I think you as executive director of a WCIA, you're the first out of the gate.
Well, thank you so much for having me and Mayor, Council members. I really always appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about my world, which is liability. It's an interesting world and the title of my, my presentation is Council Do's and Don'ts. And I will warn you ahead of time. I've heard from several council members that it feels more like don'ts than do's. But trust me, there's a few do's in there. I have set this up so that I, because I can't see you in person, I can usually see you when you're asking questions. I'm going to take a pause after each slide. And Kenan and Steve will probably add some of their thoughts to it. If there's a question that I think is outside my realm of expertise, I will defer to them. They are experts in this field. And again, I appreciate this being interactive, so please feel free to ask questions. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and hopefully this works. Looking for my PowerPoint. There we go. And I will go ahead and start the presentation. Where is it? Where's my start button? Sorry, guys. It's been a while since I've done one of these. There we go. And those, so as mentioned, I'm Anne Bennett. I'm the executive director of Washington City's Insurance Authority. And let me tell you who we are. Washington City's Insurance Authority is a municipal organization that was created in 1981 by our member cities to self-insure their risk. So in the eighties, there was an insurance crisis and cities were having a hard time finding and obtaining insurance. And that was the birth of what's called the risk pooling movement. About 80% of all municipalities nationwide are part of a risk pool. And that's because cities are looked upon as a bad risk by the insurance industry. And so they don't like to insure us. And I can tell you, we are headed into another crisis right now. The insurance carriers nationwide and especially in Washington state are looking at public entity risk as something that they can't make money on. They're in the business to make money. I'm not. I'm a nonprofit. I have 165 members throughout the state of Washington. Close to you, I have Medina, I have Yarrow Point, I have Kirkland, I have Newcastle. I don't have the real big cities. I don't have Bellevue. I don't have Seattle. They're too big for risk pooling. It's usually, you know, smaller cities, medium sized cities. We have over $181 million in assets to help ensure your risks. We do some insurance ourselves. We also rely on some reinsurance partners. And we have the strongest financials of any risk pool in the state of Washington. The city of Clyde Hill, I, you saw me stutter there because when I started at WCI 25 years ago, you were a town. And I can remember at that time, the city administrator would say to me, anytime I said city and not a city or town. And then you became a city. And so I gotta, I gotta catch myself every time because I want to go back to my old habit. But you have been a member of WCIA since 1990. It is a member run organization. The members decide the coverages, the amount of coverage and the direction of the organization. So any questions on that brief introduction? We provide you with $20 million per occurrence of coverage. So that means at any claim or lawsuit, there's $20 million of insurance to cover the city. One of the things that we do is we look for coverage that as much as we can find it. When you are dealing with most insurance companies, they're looking to deny coverage. My goal is to help my members and I try to look for coverage rather than exclusions. That's not to mean everything is paid or everything is covered. But again, you're going to find we're a friendly venue. We also, as I mentioned, go out and purchase insurance. So the city has these other insurance products through us. But we also provide what I call insurance services, which is, you know, claims, which you expect. But one of the tenants of risk pooling is risk management. And it's to avoid the claim and to avoid the litigation and to assist cities in managing risk so that you never find yourself in that situation. And that's why we go out and we do these trainings on liability and risk management to hopefully give you the tools to not create liability for your city. And questions on that? So we're going to start with some good news. Individuals, so when you are serving on a council, you receive absolute immunity for legislative activities. So when you're adopting budgets, ordinances, resolutions, you have absolute immunity for those legislative activities. Now, keep in mind that is only within the context of a council meeting as a whole and not when you're acting as an individual. So when you are making these decisions as a body, you as an individual have absolute immunity for those activities. This is extremely strong. I'll give you some, I'll give you an example and I'll tell a few stories along the way of some cases that we've had. We had a member city has a very nice waterfront that is historical in nature. And they basically extended that historical designation a little further out into a property that a developer was wanting to put a hotel on. Now, the good news is, you know, this was all done correctly. The extension was done correctly. There was no vesting by the developer in this project. But what occurred is that the developer decided he wanted to change their minds. And so he sued each of the council members individually. And the reason he did that is he wanted them to change their mind and thought, if you're sued individually, you're going to think twice and you might, you know, listen to me and you might change your decision. Well, that didn't go over so well with the courts. And the reason it didn't is because you have absolute immunity. And so we of course moved to dismiss that lawsuit immediately, arguing this immunity. And unfortunately, the developer wasn't really listening to many of the warnings before we filed the motion. And there was a decision and sanctions were awarded along with attorney's fees. But his goal was to keep the threat of litigation going, hoping that again, minds would be changed. And so he appealed that and was hoping that people would say, well, I don't want to run again because I don't want this lawsuit over my head. I don't want more lawsuits. And that he could maybe have some influence on who was on the council during the next election. Well, let's just say a federal judge didn't look too kindly to that either and awarded over $100,000 in sanctions as well as all of the attorney's fees in the case. So I tell you that to say, you can be secure when you're legislating and when you're acting as a body of a whole, as a whole, you do have absolute immunity. Any questions on that? Steve, did you want to add anything?
No, Anne, I think the point you made is an important one. Distinction between the legislative body and the individual council member who may or may not be acting as a legislator, even though maybe acting on city issues. Another point of clarification here very quickly is that when we talk about the legislative body in Clyde Hill, we're talking not only about the council members, but the mayor as well. Because the mayor is part of the legislative body, both because of her presiding authority over the council meetings as a matter of law and also because of her veto authority. Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
And looks like Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, just, just to help clarify. How do you define acting as an individual versus, I get the concept back to as a council as a whole. What's the individual issues that would create liability?
Let me give an example from the political side of things. Yeah. The constitution and statutes of our state prohibit the city from being involved in any political activity with three narrow exceptions. The first narrow exception is adoption of a resolution endorsing a ballot measure. For example, if the Clyde Hill City Council were to adopt a resolution endorsing or opposing a school levy election, you are authorized to do that. The second exception is with respect to the publication of neutral factual information regarding a city ballot measure. So that you can publish so that the voters are well informed, but you can't take a position on it. The third exception is for individual council members who may identify themselves as council members if they are endorsing a political candidate or a ballot measure. That is an exception to the rule regarding when a council, a city council member may engage in political activity as a council member relating to and using the council member moniker. The other individual aspect that we will talk about on occasion is when an individual council member or council members seek to, as Anne already alluded, to act outside of their legislative authority with respect to city issues. We'll be talking about some of those examples later this evening.
All right. Well, I'll wait for those examples to, to make sure I'm clear on it. Thank you.
Yeah. Make sure we round back on that too, as we move along there. I think there will be some other examples, but if you're still not so sure or if you think I tend to do this or that, is that okay? Or is that increasing my liability? Let's, this is what we need to put on the table tonight. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah. And it's, and it's partly understanding what happens with, say, when a resident contacts me directly and wants to talk about an issue or something that we're working on, maybe or maybe not working on something that's important to them in the community and where does, where do I draw that line?
Yes.
I think we can get into that a little bit later. I've got some examples. And then we can circle back at the end if, if it's not clear because I have a few areas to talk about with that.
Great. Thanks.
Who's, who's watching the lobby? There's someone waiting. Is that you Courtney or John?
Got it. Just saw it.
Okay. Just making sure it's, thank you.
Admitted.
So one area, and what I'm going to do is kind of break down specific exposures. So I'm going to give you kind of a title and then we're going to talk about some of the exposures that council have in these types of issues that we see. So I'm going to talk in two slides here about land use matters and where we've seen councils can get into trouble. The first thing to think about is when you're sitting as a council, it are, is your role in whatever's in front of you legislative or is it quasi judicial? And what I will tell you is you won't stumble into a quasi judicial status. Your city attorney is going to tell you, you know, you are sitting quasi judicially for this matter. And so that's usually appeals. And if you are in that quasi judicial role, think about what that word says. You're acting as a judge. And when you and I go to court, we expect a judge to be fair and impartial. And they must make decisions without any bias to one party or another. And so when you are in that role, it's very, I will tell you, it's a difficult role because you've been talking to constituents. You probably do have some opinion on this topic. The question is, can you be fair and impartial? And that's a question you need to ask. But what the other thing that comes into play here is something called the appearance of fairness doctrine. So you're already, you know, if you say, hey, I can't be fair and impartial. I've seen situations where council members get elected based on, let's just say, one project that they opposed. And now they're going to sit quasi, I'm sorry, quasi judicially. You have to say, I cannot be fair and impartial. I can't sit here. I oppose this project, you know, I cannot be here. But you also, under the appearance of fairness doctrine, cannot communicate with the proponent or an opponent of that project. If you do, you must declare that, that I have had communication with this proponent or this opponent when you are going to be sitting quasi judicially. You can only use the facts in the record. So you can't investigate on your own. You can't say, hey, I remember something happened here. It's in front of you only as what's in the record and that's all you can decide on. And when you are making those decisions, you must issue findings of fact. And you should avoid what they call arbitrary and capricious decisions, which mean, I just don't like it. That's arbitrary and capricious. It's not based on, does this meet code? Does, do they meet the requirements? It's, I just don't like this project. So what I will tell you on this slide, there are trainings that are offered on this topic alone that are an hour long. So I am oversimplifying this. And I would encourage you, if you find yourself in, you know, having quite a few of these hearings where you're going to be sitting in a quasi judicial role, I would recommend you go to a training and learn about it. And, you know, one way you can avoid these is you can use a hearing examiner. Lots of cities choose as a council not to sit in a quasi judicial role because of this appearance of fairness and they want to talk to their constituents. So they delegate that to a hearing examiner. And that's usually a professional attorney who hears these cases and issues decisions. So again, that's one thing you can do. But I would, I put this out just so that if you find yourself in this role and you don't have clarity, definitely talk to your city attorney and definitely get some training on just this role itself.
So question I have is, I don't know the last time we had to put our, our council members into a quasi judicial situation. And maybe we've just played it well. I know we use hearing examiners for some of the appeals and some of the, the view ordinance stuff and things like that. Am I missing something that maybe we've done that I'm just not putting this tag on it?
It's usually appeals of a land use decision. So again, it rests, you know, it may not have happened. Yeah, it may be that your hearing examiner is hearing most of what's happening out there. So again, I put it out there in case it comes up. And I would defer to Steve if he has, you know, any background on, you know, when he thinks you might be in that role.
Well, Anne identifies the main topic. That is the quasi judicial hearing on a land use application, a short plat subdivision variance that's not considered by the hearing examiner. And the council may very well not hear very many of those matters since the city is generally built out. There are other areas as well that where this can come in. Revocation of a permit or a license is a quasi judicial proceeding. Similarly, in some personnel actions, and if there's an appeal from a decision on personnel, that's a civil service issue for police, but it can also occur at the council level as well, depending on policies. So those are other areas where the council may serve in a quasi judicial capacity. But again, in a smaller city, those situations are, as the question suggests, not very frequent.
So the other area I will warn you about is inserting yourself into a process. And I have a couple of cases here, one of which was a WCIA case. And I give you these cases as an example. Westmark versus the city of Burien was a case involving apartment complex, multiple apartment complexes in the city of Burien. It actually was a project that was in the pipeline with King County, the city of Burien Incorporated in 1993. And when they incorporated, most, their inter local said, King County will do all of the processing of land use matters, permitting, et cetera. But they pulled a couple of projects and one of the ones they pulled in-house was this Westmark project. What happens is over the years, there had been by King County, a determination of significance, which means that it was deemed to have some problems with environmental issues, some impact issues. And so King County had already issued determination of significance in the SEPA process. The city of Burien took the project over and the developer in King County said, well, we were about to issue what's called a mitigated determination if they did these certain things. And the developer said, we're really close to doing these things. So this goes on. And what I will tell you is a lot of what happened in Westmark, the timeframe can't happen now because a lot of the land use laws have changed. But basically what happens is this project languishes and it languishes for years and years under this argument over the SEPA determination. And the city never issued one. City never did. Now, there's various reasons why that happens, the various arguments in the case. But throughout the process, the council is very vocal that they do not want apartment complexes in Burien. And that's one of the reasons they incorporated it and they're doing their zoning. There was also presented a trial that there was a state representative nearby and she was having closed door meetings with the council to try and stop this project. She didn't like it. But, but throughout this, there's this feeling that the council is muddling in the, this land use and stalling this project, installing the SEPA determination. Now, from WCIA's perspective, we're saying the SEPA determination rests with the developer. We asked for certain things. They're not doing it. That's the city's argument. I want to say about two, might've been 2,000. I can't recall exactly. But the, the city and the developer, now they incorporate in 93, so it's about 2,000, I believe. There was a settlement agreement and the agreement was that WCI paid $200,000 in damages and that the city would allow this to go forward and they would issue these certain SEPA determinations. Well, it continues to stall and stall and stall. And then the Westmark kind of moves to enforce the settlement agreement. Says, look, you got to give us a decision under the settlement agreement. You're lagging behind. We're going to go to court. We're going to force it. And at that time, the city council said, we did not approve this in open session. Therefore, this settlement agreement is null and void. So then there's a whole bunch of litigation over the settlement agreement. And it ends up going back and forth to the point that it completely is basically thrown out and the lawsuit reinstated. So again, we're continuing with this project has languished. Well, guess what? In 2005, and remember this started in 1993, this goes to a jury trial. And at trial, the argument was, A, you backed out of the settlement agreement. You acted in bad faith. You sent a letter saying we had a deal. And then, you know, when you didn't want to follow through, you backed out, council. And you've been interfering with this all along. You have been stalling the SEPA determination because you're hoping we'll go away and that we'll go bankrupt or we'll lose interest. That's why the jury found against the city of Burien for $10 million. At that time, that was the biggest verdict WCI had ever received. And we were stunned, stunned by it, stunned by the amount. Because, you know, trying to settle it, we thought, you know, they were asking for millions and we said, it's not worth millions. But apparently a jury disagreed with us. So when you get a $10 million verdict, you go to, you immediately say, I'm going to appeal. And so we appealed that verdict. And not only did the Court of Appeals agree with the jury verdict, but they too found tortuous interference. They found, in their words, bad behavior by the council. And they upheld that jury verdict. So again, this had nothing to do with you making a decision, you know, as a council. This had to do with interfering and that there was all kinds of evidence that the council was trying to stop this project. And that became problematic because the taint of that, they felt influenced the staff, even though, you know, planning directors changed over time. The next case I always call a city attorney's case, which is listen to your city attorney. So Mission Springs versus the city of Spokane is an interesting case because Mission Springs was a major development that was going into the city of Spokane. We don't have Spokane. And it was controversial. And many constituents contacted the mayor and said, you know, we don't, we don't like this project. What can we do to stop this project? So during a council meeting, the mayor, just from the dais, said to the planning director, we would like, I would like an update on where Mission Springs is at. And what I will say is he invited all of the constituents who were against the project and he didn't invite the developer. And when the planning director gets up, he says, the grading permits have been issued, which means this is out of the gate. This is, you know, they are ready to go. The permits have been issued. So they are legal to proceed with their development. So what happens is the mayor and I believe another council member, and Steve probably knows this case better than I, said, you know, what, well, what can we do to stop it? And the city attorney stops and says, you can do nothing to stop it. If, you know, if you try and stop this, you would be violating the law. Now, one thing I will say, I'm usually surprised with this case that the city attorney didn't say, let's go into executive session and have a discussion about what you can and can't do and get some legal advice, but didn't happen. and get some legal advice, but didn't happen. It was on the record that this would be illegal. So right after that advice, the mayor directed the official, the planning director, do not issue the grading permit and stop the project. So what do you think Mission Springs, the developer did? They went to court immediately and said, you can't stop our project. This was done in bad faith. And they knowingly violated the law. And the court of, the, the trial court and the Court of Appeals agreed. And what they said was, you weren't acting as legislators when you made this decision. You have no legislative immunity. You knowingly broke the law. You stopped this project despite your attorney explaining to you, you had no ability to do so. And they found the, the individuals and the city liable under state and federal law. So one thing that happens with insurance is when you, you know, insurance is all about accidents and it's all about, you know, you do something and it's unintended and you get sued. When you knowingly break the law and you're not acting legislatively, guess what Spokane's insurance carrier did? They denied coverage. This was a multimillion dollar project. Now, I can tell you that there was all kinds of litigation over just that insurance issue and I honestly don't know how it resolved. But I do know there was lots of money paid to Mission Springs and I don't honestly know who paid for it. And that's something I've never heard, how that ended up, if it was the city or if it was a combination. But again, and I'll, when I get to the end of this, I'll let Steve talk to you a little bit more because it's so important that when your attorney is giving you direction and says, you know, stop, do not pass go, that you stop. The last one I want to give you is actually an interesting case and it's more for what can happen. This is a good result for Kitsap County. This involved a, I, I think it was a mobile home park, but it was a long, long, long delay of this mobile home park. And a lot of it had to do with Department of Health permitting that was completely outside the county. But what happened is because of the delay, the developer did a public records request and wanted to find out what's going on with this project. And he happened to find an email from a county commissioner to a constituent that said, don't worry, I will do everything I can within the law to stop this project. And what do you think became exhibit A? They said, aha, we've got it. You know, there's interference by the county commissioner. And what was very helpful is that they were able, the county, to demonstrate that there was no knowledge by the staff of anything from this county commissioner of bad faith or interfering. It was merely this email. And so in this case, the court sided with Kitsap County and said, you know, the delays were reasonable. It had to do with a lot of permitting issues and avoiding that taint of bad faith is paramount. So what I tell you this story for is just that one email, that's what drew litigation. One email saying, I'm going to do this because they're looking for that council interference. And so I would say, you know, we, we always laugh. We always say email can and will be used against you in a court of law. And trust me, I, I see lots of email in our litigation. So with that, I'll answer questions or probably turn it over to Steve first and then we can answer questions.
Yeah, and I just want to note two points from the Mission Springs case. It was a motion by the city council and Spokane at the time was a council manager form of government directing the manager to pull the permits. And our Supreme Court in that case stated the following. The motion passed by the Spokane City Council was not legislation generally applicable to the entire community, but rather an act directly directed specifically at Mission. It was administrative or executive in nature, not legislative and therefore legislative immunity is not available here, as Anne's mentioned. The other quote I want to make, make note of from our Supreme Court stated, we have a rather straightforward situation where clear legal rights of the citizen were violated by city council members acting in excess of their lawful authority and by a city manager acting in excess of his own lawful authority, but at the urging of the city council. Again, the council was trying to direct the manager's executive authority and the manager followed that direction to his peril as well. The motion was passed and only those council members who voted in favor of the motion were sued. So just that's a note on the Mission Springs case.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate it.
Okay, so what questions or comments does this offer up for, for everyone here? Everyone's, everyone's kind of readjusting in their seats a little bit there.
I scared you.
What's all at stake here? Yeah, for sure.
All right, well, we'll move on into another area and this other area is personnel. So what I would say for council is you want to stay in your legislative role when it comes to personnel. Personnel law is extremely complex. We have a whole program that we devote personnel attorneys where they ask, you know, can answer questions of our members and help guide them through the various pitfalls of personnel issues. And we do that as a service to all of our members. What I will say as a council is your legislative role is to set policies, to set budget and set, set codes. So you don't want to stray into the executive role, which is the mayor's role of managing employees, hiring and firing employees and disciplining employees. And the reason I say that is because it is very tricky with a public employee. The rights that they have, the, what, how you have to go through various scenarios that are brought forward with you. And I have seen time after time, no good thing comes when council members insert themselves into a personnel issue. This may be your favorite employee and you may want to champion that person. But remember you represent the city and you need to defer to the executive with regard to that authority. Now, this is an area where the mayor can be held liable for personnel actions. So, you know, if the mayor's acting within the course and scope of her duties and, you know, she's firing somebody, I cover wrongful termination. These are areas too, though, I have seen lots of individuals sued and we'll go into the next slide and I'll kind of talk about where individuals can be sued there. But I have had, you know, basically city councils break apart and unable to work together over just one personnel issue. And, you know, they're, they are very emotional. They're never easy and because the law is constantly changing, we say, you know, turn it over to professionals, let them assist you in that process. And, you know, do your best as a council to not interfere and to not get involved in any of these personnel situations. And I'm going to jump into the next slide because it kind of, we'll, we'll answer questions after both because I want to continue on this personnel area because this is also where you as a council person can get sued individually. And that's under harassment and discrimination. If you are knowingly harassing someone and, you know, harassment, illegal harassment is usually based on gender, national origin, race. There's, you know, all kinds of harassment that occurs, but illegal harassment is based on a protected class status. And what I would say is know the law and know the city's policies with regard to harassment. So if you haven't attended a harassment training in years, it's worth attending one. At least read the city's policies with regard to harassment and discrimination and know that you're held to that. You're held to those policies. And I can tell you there was, it was a city manager form of government, but a mayor was routinely inappropriately touching female staff. And there were complaints and basically it, nothing changed. And in the end, there were, was litigation over that touching. And I can tell you that at the next several council meetings, women showed up with signs with, don't touch me, it made all kinds of publicity. And in fact, that mayor come election time, lost reelection. And so at the very least, know that these are areas that the public won't tolerate. Now, if you as a council member, if somebody comes to you, and this is one of those areas, you know, if somebody comes to you and says, I'm being harassed by X, you have a duty to report it to the executive. And what I would say is you're going to report it, pursue it to your policy. If there's various, if it's this person, then it goes to the next person, then it goes to the next person. So you need to make sure that you're not holding on to that information because the city will be held liable for your knowledge of it. If you know, you have a duty to report and make, and you need to tell that employee, I can't keep your confidence. So if someone came to me and said, hey, Anne, I'm being harassed, but I don't want you to do anything about it. I don't want you to say anything. My answer is, I'm sorry, legally, I cannot give you confidentiality. I will keep your confidence, you know, I will do my best. I won't, what shall I say, publicize this? But I cannot promise you confidentiality because I have a duty to act. And so again, I would say if you witness something inappropriate, please, please, please report it. If you're aware of harassment or any type of discrimination or jokes going around, it, it behooves all of us to stop that. This is a workplace that's not allowed. And again, I would say review the city's policies. So after those two slides, I'm going to pause for comments and questions.
I have a question. Where's our city policy for us to read?
Dean looking for you at the handbook?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to get that to you.
Okay, so, so there is one, it's just.
Yeah, we just got through revising, if I'm right, Dean, revising the employee handbook with all of its policies and procedures. I mean, it was so outdated that it's one of those big work projects that they took on. And so it's in its final stages of being updated and blessed, to be honest.
It's not quite, the new version.
Is there training as well? Sorry.
It's very comprehensive, yeah, very comprehensive.
Using the training, we do, we, we use WCIA for that sort of training. I can, there's a, they schedule all kinds of supervisor training, harassment training, all kinds of different training throughout the year. So that's something we can, we can communicate that to you.
And we also have an online version, that's just a recorded version, if you're interested, on the WCIA Academy. So it's, it's on, online as well that you can access on the website.
I know we have a lot of our city staff that are leaders on the call here too. And I think this is just an, an open invitation reminder that if anybody has any issues or concerns, they should be escalating to their, you know, their pathway. And obviously to me, if, if ultimately I, you know, I need to know, especially if it's your direct report and you're like, I can't bring it up to that person. So there is always an escalation path and there's even one higher than me, which would be our, our city attorney, if that was the issue. I, I would also say this is that I am so proudful, really quite honestly, of the hard work that, that we have done in filling our open positions over this last year and a half. It was hard enough to have to go through COVID and all the remote work and the changes that we had. But I am so pleased with the people that we brought in. I think they're contributing greatly and really appreciate it. And so, you know, any questions or concerns about performances and such, Dean's all ears, I'm all ears. We want to make sure that your interactions with them are solid and strong and good. So, you know, we welcome that, that level of feedback. But if there's any questions about what's going on with them, again, I think what these slides are pointing to is, you know, let's make sure we're using the right chain of command. Because you don't know, trust me, you don't know all that goes on with these individuals behind the scenes.
I'm sorry, could I ask one other bit on this? I think the guidance around leave personnel issues to the, you know, as a council member, don't, don't get involved there, it makes sense. I took some MRSC training that suggested that asserted that council powers include, and I'm looking at another screen to read this, defining powers, functions and duties of city officers and employees. That's separate from the kind of personnel issues that you're talking about. Yes, Anne?
Yes, that gets into the legislative ordinances. So, you know, when you're, when you're back here, you're setting policy. And so you're setting your municipal codes. That's usually where you're legislating. And I believe, and I'll defer to Steve on that specific RCW that you're referring to. But it's, it's generally that legislative role where you're deciding, you know, the duties, if you're going to, let's say, bring a, a city attorney in house. Stuff like that is usually what I've seen that councils get involved in.
Let me ask, let me ask you this. I've had this mentioned. Mentioned might not be the right word, but it's like, fine, we don't hire, we don't fire. But we approve contracts. So all we need to do is not approve the contract and we control who you bring in.
That can be a little dangerous. And where I've seen it come up is, I'll, I'll give you an example of one I know about. A, a council flat didn't like an employee and basically said, we're not going to renew the contract, took a motion from the floor, said, you know, no longer employed. Well, what they didn't know is that person was actually a whistleblower and had blown the whistle on some inappropriate spending. And so that pulled a whistleblower complaint. You can have situations where, you know, public employees often have, you know, can have a property right to their job. You've got some, you know, a lot of the handbooks. And again, yours could have this where, you know, there's a progressive discipline that needs to occur. You know, let's say you decide you don't like me anymore and you want to cancel my contract, but all my male counterparts got their contract renewed. Well, I'm going to argue that was gender discrimination. So what I would say is, you know, there's, there's all kinds of things that can be alleged when you just say, I'm not going to approve a contract. They're going to look at, you know, it's because of X, Y or Z, whatever protected class status that I have. I will argue you didn't follow procedure when you did it. And again, I, I think you have to be very careful because, you know, the whistleblower one came up and, and in fact, it turned out that a council person did know that this person had been the whistleblower. And that was kind of the big, you know, revelation in litigation is everybody honestly said, we had no idea, we had no idea. And then, you know, there was a smoking email that said, yeah, you had an idea and that's why you fired this person. So again, whistleblowers are protected. So I, I would be very careful and I would caution against that. I would go through your normal procedures with regard to deciding what, you know, if you're going to terminate a contract of an employee, that is, that's a termination. And you should go through your normal process for terminating an employee.
Anne, I'll just add on really quickly, Ken Williams, I, I back up Steve. She mentioned the progressive discipline. There's a case called Danielson in the state of Washington. And essentially whether, whether intentionally or unintentionally, we have, for the most part, as governments, given property rights, so to speak, to public employees. And they have, you have to follow due process. So to some degree, as, as Anne mentioned, you've got to look at your policies, follow those policies because if it smacks of some form of retaliation or lack of process, then you're going to get in trouble. So. So there might be legitimate reasons, budgetary concerns, other policy concerns, such as you're just not using that position anymore, but follow the process. And generally, that's left to the administration. And whatever policy decisions are out there, that goes with the city council.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll move out of personnel into an area I call negligent misrepresentation. And this is kind of a confusing one, so I'll give you an example at the end. But basically, this is my request that you do not make specific promises or assurances. And the reason is because of something called negligent misrepresentation, which says, if you make a promise or assurance and someone relies on that promise and assurance, and that was wrong, and they were damaged because of it. So they relied on this promise or assurance and they went forward and it was wrong and they were damaged by it. They have a claim under negligent misrepresentation. So the easiest thing is to give you an example. One of our cities, they're downtown, very cute, very quaint. It has all cedar shingles all across the downtown. Couple of years ago, a owner of a, a business and, and the building noticed that, you know, cedar shingles were being rotted away, they needed to be replaced. So he came in to talk to the building official, who happened to be out that day. And he ended up talking to the mayor and he said, look, cedar shingles, I know that's your code, but boy, I am really struggling as a business. I know we have a good relationship. I know you want to keep my business. Is there any way that I can avoid the cedar shingle? And, you know, maybe just stucco it, because, you know, times are tight, I'm going to go under. And so the mayor said, you know, we really appreciate your business, we really like you in, you know, in that building. We want to keep you here, yeah, go ahead, don't put up the shingle. So what do you think happens? He starts putting up the stucco on his building and the building official immediately red tags it because it violates code. And, you know, this business owner came out and said, look, I talked to the mayor, the mayor said, this is fine. And the answer was, no, it was not. That was a negligent misrepresentation. So he had to tear down all of the stucco and put up cedar shingle. Now, he filed a damage claim because he said, hey, I relied on this promise and assurance and it cost me money. And so WCI handled the claim for the stucco, taking it down and the cost of it because it was a negligent misrepresentation by that city official to that citizen. So what I would say is you have experts at, at, at your disposal, it's called staff. And what I would say is if a citizen asks you a question, don't be afraid to say, I don't know. I say that a lot, I don't know, I don't know the answer. But I do know who does. And what I usually recommend is that you give the citizen, the staff member's name, you know, I know who does know the answer to that, or you can go to, you know, this department. And then you let the department know, hey, I had a citizen that was inquiring about this. And that's why you have staff. They are experts, they are subject matter experts that are on hand and they can document the question, they can answer the question. And you're not caught in the middle of making a specific promise or assurance. What I will say is don't take matters into your own hands. And when you start taking matters into your own hands, it leads to a lot of confusion because your constituents trust you. They trust what you're telling them. And, you know, if you're acting outside of whatever the city code is or, you know, you're making these promises, then those citizens are going to be pretty upset with you when staff has to follow the law. So again, I would say, this is an area that I do see a lot of councils start kind of getting in the middle of, you know, disputes between city staff or citizens who don't like what's happening on their specific issue. And when you're inserting yourself, again, there's a lot of confusion and you could get into this negligent misrepresentation. So again, this is also an area where you're not acting legislatively. You're acting as an individual. So you're inserting yourself into this matter and it's not legislative of nature. So I have seen a few times when, you know, there's an allegation that, you know, a council member, you know, told me X, Y, Z, and I relied upon it. So I, I put this out there just to say, use your staff, they're there as the subject matter experts. So questions, comments, I guess, from Steve too?
I'm not sure, Councilmember Hagemovic's question was fully answered. RCW 35A12020 does provide that the authority duties and qualifications of all appointive officers shall be prescribed by ordinance consistent with provisions, other provisions of the Title 35A. The reference, of course, is to officers, not all employees of the city are officers. A good distinction would be between that of the police chief, who's clearly an officer, and a public works road person who would not be an officer of the city. But certainly, the council does have the authority by ordinance to specify duties, authority and qualifications. Having said that, we also have seen occasions where councils try to go beyond that authority and usurp the executive authority. And that's just one of the areas where you've got to be careful. And that's where either we or your new city attorneys will provide the guidance.
So I think this is important because I know on one hand, there is the desire and the, the goal to make sure that you're accessible and that you reach out to our residents so that they know, they have an issue or concern, they can go to you as kind of a liaison, if you will. So I think what I'm hearing here, and I don't know, Annie, want to reinforce, is that we have to be careful. Because if what they're bringing up to you might ultimately end up before you in some level of, you know, a, a change in, in code ordinances or something on that line, and you're therefore in it, going to be in a position to officially vote and legislate on that topic, you have to be careful upfront what you are either promising or soliciting from that individual. You know, information now might be problematic later to where maybe perhaps you're going to have to recuse yourself from being able to vote. Is, did I take that right, Anne?
Yeah, that, that can definitely occur. And you can definitely find yourself on opposite ends of you made a statement and the citizen, you know, believes in your statement and, and you realize, you know, the code is the code, you know, it had, the law is the law. So that's the other thing, is you can sometimes find yourself in a difficult position. And I've had councils, people called as a witness to say, you know, I talked to this council person and they said X, Y, Z. You know, again, I think, you know, listening is always good. And that's not what I'm, I'm getting at here, you know, listening is what you're there to do. Taking people's concerns in. And again, what I, what I would say is if you have, you know, something and it's like, hey, that, that's interesting. You can, you know, then ask Dean or the city attorney and say, hey, can I get some clarification so I understand this issue? And I usually recommend doing that verbally rather than starting an email trail of, you know, I, I, what, what's going on here? So then you have this whole discussion. I, I generally like conversation when you're asking, you know, to be educated on an issue. But again, I do think, you know, there's times when it's, it's very difficult because you box yourself into a corner. And then later, you know, you're, you're asked to make this decision and people are looking at you saying, I thought you were on my side. And that's, the idea is not to take sides, that you're on the side of the city. You're, and, and you're listening and, you know, again, if there's an overall concern that you have and you, you know, want to talk about that, that's something that you can talk about as, you know, in legislative activities. But again, I'd be careful with specific promises or assurances.
Anne, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to follow up on that point. And this gets to Councilmember Friedman's question a little bit that he posed earlier. And that is certainly a council member, as both mayor and, and Bennett mentioned, you know, should be available and responsive to their constituents. But recognizing that they have limited authority, a council member can only take an issue forward to the administration for resolution because a council member doesn't have any individual liability. The other sensitivity that you have to have in these situations is that as a council member, as a, an elected officer of the city of Clyde Hill, you are a council member 24/7. You don't get to take off your hat and say you're not a council member. And anytime you're dealing with city-related issues, you are a council member and you're, you're held to the standards of, provided by law. And one of those standards is that you are a trustee or a fiduciary for the city of Clyde Hill, which means your primary obligation, your primary trust responsibilities are not to the citizens, but to the city. The city is a municipal corporation. You sit on the board of that corporation and your primary responsibility as an officer, board member, trustee is to that corporation.
But Steve, what if, because we do have some of these cases that an individual council member really has a personal point to be had on a particular topic?
There's certainly, that's a, if it's a political issue relating to a, a matter coming before the council, they have every right to express it. Anne's already cautioned when that may be a quasi judicial issue. Certainly on legislative matters, the council member is recognized as having his or her own biases and prejudices. And the voters may recognize that. And the courts will protect you when you're acting in a legislative capacity in that regard.
Do they have to recuse themselves from voting?
If they're voting on an issue relating to their own interests, yes, but otherwise, no. You know, let me give you an example. I, as a council member, have a strong feeling that we should not be licensing snakes and other dangerous animals. The city of Clyde Hill should not be in that business. We shouldn't be regulating snakes, lizards and the other. When a regulatory ordinance regarding snakes and lizards and dangerous animals comes before the council, the council member who has already expressed a position on that can clearly take a position and vote against that ordinance if he or she so chooses. So if it is not, if it's a general application ordinance or that the council is considering, then the council member is free to express his or her political position and to vote on it.
What if though, the council member has, and yeah, and Steve, one more thing. What if a council member has a personal issue with the city on a particular topic and it's going to be coming up for discussion or for, for voting? So how they vote may make a difference on their personal issue.
Well, it's a, it, it depends on, you know, this, these are fact-specific situations. And I'm not sure I, I can answer that question.
They should just raise their hand to you and get clarification beforehand, maybe.
Yeah, let me use an example from a Supreme Court decision of our state. The issue was the vacation of a street in front of a council member's house. The court invalidated the city's action in vacating the street because a council member participated and voted on the street vacation. And the court said that the council member was involved basically on an issue that he or she had a personal interest in, which violated the council member's trust obligation and to not take, participate in an issue where that council member had a direct interest. So it, it does come up from time to time, but we typically deal with them on a case-by-case basis. That's an example that our courts have already dealt with.
Okay, Dean H?
Thank you. I was trying to go back, Mayor, to something that, that you asked that kicked off Anne's answer and back. So from a legislative point of view, just looking at an ordinance, I think the mayor suggested that there are situations where council members would need to recuse themselves from voting on a general ordinance. And I'm, I'm trying to think of an example of, of, of one of that, that mayor, that's how I understood your assertion.
I was just, I was clarifying if, when, and if there were opportunities, times where one would have to recuse themselves because of what was going on, maybe personally with the city on maybe that same topic. That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Right. And I'm, I'm just trying to come back to that because I understand vacating a street, yep, I, I understand how that could be an issue. But in general, here is an ordinance around whatever it is.
I, I think that Steve mentioned, you know, you're, you're a legislator and so you're going to have an opinion. And if it comes up and you've said, I have a strong opinion, I don't like snakes, then you definitely can vote on that ordinance. Even though, you know, you've, you've come out vocally and said, I don't like snakes. I think that was Steve's example on that question. I guess, I, I might be a little confused because I'm, I'm looking at ordinance, you know, you're voting on an ordinance. Usually it's under, you know, if you have some type of conflict, that, that's when you can't vote.
Right, and that's what I'm, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's, that's what my understanding is, if you have.
I'm sorry, I, I think it's that Steve was saying something, but he was muted.
What I was saying was, it's hard to answer that question as hypothetical. We want to defend the rights of the council to act in their legislative capacity and for council members' individual opinions on an issue to be expressed, whether it's popular or not. The tension arises when the action of the council, and it's hard to define it, would preclude a council member from voting on it. If it is a, an ordinance of general application, has no specific application to an individual, it may very well be that the council member is permitted to vote on it, even if they have a strong interest in it. The law, it, chapter 4223 RCW has a number of examples. And the most common example that's expressed in that statute where there is no conflict when a council member votes on an ordinance of general application that he or she may be otherwise conflicted, is when you vote on rates for utility matters. And while the city doesn't have a strong utility presence, nevertheless, it does from time to time, set utility rates. And those are, those are situations where you are voting on your personal issue. Because if you raise or lower utility rates, you're affecting yourself personally. Those are specifically allowed by statute. But that's an example where if it was not allowed by statute, you couldn't vote on it. Because you have a direct involvement in the outcome of that ordinance.
Thank you. I'm doing a time check, Anne, it's eight 10.
Okay. I'll speed through these next couple.
And, and we welcome Councilmember Scott Moore, I think Scott's joined us, if I saw that. Thank you, Scott, appreciate it.
Okay, I will move very quickly into defamation. Again, kind of along the lines what we've been saying, if you have a, a statement or opinion regarding a legislative concern, you have immunity. That's what you're there for, you're there to debate, you're there to debate issues, concerns. And, you know, that is, anytime you're talking about that opinion, you have immunity. The, the area of defamation that you can get yourself in trouble with is discussing or naming individuals in your discussion. Now, we kind of talked about this a little bit earlier, like what's, you know, a public official. So, you know, when you're discussing a public official, there, there's some immunities there. But again, you have to be careful. And what I would say is I'd be very careful about discussing any. And what I would say is I'd be very careful about discussing any individual on the record because any untruth can give rise to liability. And we did have a case where a council member was saying to a staff member that on the dais that you can't trust this person, they're a liar. I've caught them in lies and that actually pulled a defamation lawsuit. So, you know, this is an area where, you know, when you put things out there about individuals, you are walking a tight rope. And so I think, you know, follow the golden rule, as always, treat others as you would like to be treated. And I would be very careful about talking about individuals when you're on the dais. So this is kind of a shortened explanation of this slide because I know we're getting on time. And this is an area I do want to spend a little more time on. And this is something that I see a lot of cities get involved in. And I call it political engineering. So in this state, we have something called joint and several liability. Joint and several liability means that if a plaintiff, the injured party, is fault-free and they sue multiple defendants, they can collect against any defendant as long as there is at least 1% of fault attributed to that defendant. So what does that mean? Well, that often means that, let's just say, you have a crosswalk and an individual is struck in that crosswalk by an uninsured driver. That often means that we will get something called a road design lawsuit that says, hey, we're going to bring the city in because there's really not enough insurance to cover the injuries of the person that was struck in the crosswalk. So we're going to allege some type of design error. So where this comes up is often with, you know, speed, signage is a big one. Crosswalks is a massive one. Crosswalks aren't force fields and there are more people injured in crosswalks than there are people jaywalking. And that's because there's a false sense of safety. Now, when you get involved in these, you know, this litigation, it is effectively an engineering malpractice case. So the plaintiff will hire engineers and we will hire engineers and we'll argue over the engineering of that traffic treatment, the crosswalk, the sign. When I talk about political engineering, this is where councils can get into trouble. Because if you start arbitrarily pacing stop signs or, hey, we really want to put a crosswalk here, you do not have the engineering standard to back up that decision. So a quick example, many years ago, I was talking to the mayor of Mercer Island and he said, I have a great example for this, Anne. Citizens came to a council meeting one night and said, we really want a stop sign at this corner. You know, it's too busy. We've seen some near misses. We want a stop sign. And he said, as mayor, I said, you know what? If 30 citizens came to this meeting and asked for a stop sign, we're putting in a stop sign. So he directed his Public Works Director, put in a stop sign. And the Public Works Director said, well, it's not warranted. We want a stop sign. And he said, the next council meeting, there were 200 people there saying how this stop sign impeded and backed up traffic throughout that street and said, boy, it is so dangerous. Why did you put that stop sign there? And he couldn't defend the stop sign. So it was taken out. So again, this is often where I will see statements made about, this is a dangerous crosswalk, this is a dangerous area. Well, is it? I've had situations where we've deposed council members on the record about their knowledge of this crosswalk, that they were out telling citizens, yes, we know it's dangerous. I've told staff it's dangerous. And the answer came back, how many accidents were there? And there were zero until this particular accident. So again, I would caution about getting involved in any of these traffic engineering treatments. If you have citizens who are interested, you want to make sure that you're running, there's all kinds of studies that need to be done and what they call warrants that need to be done for various traffic control treatments. So again, I would caution on this issue and it comes up quite a bit. So I would say be aware of it. And this is another area that you have a conversation with your Public Works Department. You don't put it in writing that I'm worried about, you know. I've seen things like how many people have to die before you do something. That is a horrific thing to see in writing. All right. And again, these are two last slides. This one is, I ask you not to leak executive session information. I'm sure Steve will talk to you about this too, but I would say resist the temptation to share. You, you know, executive session exists for a reason. It's so that you can have an honest discussion with your attorney about potential litigation. And when you violate that, it does no good. I've been in mediations where the council has shared with the plaintiff what my authority levels are, have told them, I know that, you know, WCIA's authority is X. And so I'm in a mediation and I'm trying to settle it and they know my top dollar. How would you feel if you were buying a house and you enter into negotiations and the person knows your top dollar before you even start? Same thing with, you know, when you're talking about real estate transactions in executive session. Again, you know, these aren't areas that it's fundamental fairness. That's why it's an exec session. Because it's something of a nature that is confidential and it's strategizing and it doesn't help the city for the other side to know what is going on. And I have seen it where memos have been leaked out of executive session. It's got, people have gone to the newspaper. I will say we've had situations where it got so bad that we actually pulled all communication with the city because staff felt pressured when asked by council about status on litigation and things were leaking to the other side. So we cut off all communication. There have been situations I've seen where the council members impose sanctions on an individual for violating that executive session. So again, please, please, please keep that session confidential. And last but not least, this is always a good reminder, be mindful of your written communications. You are a public official and when you are writing about city business, that is a public document. So you always want to use city email, not your personal email. If you use a personal computer, I mean, it's one thing if you have city email and it goes to the city server. But if you're drafting documents and it's on a personal computer and there's a public records request, you're going to be asked to provide that document. And so oftentimes, if you have things on a personal computer, you're going to sign an affidavit saying, I searched my personal computer. But there are several cases where council members were claiming privacy rights and the answer was no. If you're doing city business on your personal computer, it can be subject to search and those documents are still public. What I will also say, and I put this under the Facebook, be aware, Facebook pages can be open public forums, which mean that you are inviting people to comment. You don't get to shut it down. So we had a case where a public official had a public Facebook page as a public official and was, you know, didn't shut down the comments. So there were some pretty offensive things being posted and he blocked that person. It was actually someone who was part of a hate group and that person brought a First Amendment claim. And it was actually viable because it was open for public issues and public matters and for discussion. It was considered a public forum. And by stopping that communication, that was a violation of that person's First Amendment rights. Also be mindful of the Open Public Meetings Act with written communications. Oftentimes, there's what they call serial meetings where it's an email. And yeah, just because you're not saying reply all, but if you forward it to a council member, anytime you are starting to build consensus and you're not in a public meeting, you're violating the Open Public Meetings Act. What I will say is open public meetings violations and public disclosure violations are not something WCI covers because those are penalties. And again, this is an area where your legislative immunity may not apply when you're violating the Open Public Meetings Act. And I know, again, this is an area of the OPMA where there is specific training on just this issue. This is just a reminder from me. And again, just be aware of some of the pitfalls with, you know, the communications and when you're creating a public forum. So with that, that is the end of my presentation.
Him has a question or a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe this is maybe putting too many things together all at once. But if we have a situation, and I understand the whole necessity to keep verbal communications as opposed to email conversations. And I don't know that this, maybe this is one of those factual things that we need to, you know, I mean, I don't have a factual case, but hypothetically, if I were to write an email to the city attorney and if I put attorney-client privileged on there, does that preclude that from an open public meeting and from public disclosure? There may be a number of different hypothetical reasons I want to do that. But if, so if I have a question, for example, can I put attorney-client privilege and does that protect that communication from going to be, from becoming public?
Let me take that one, Anne.
Yes, please.
Okay. First of all, all of your communications are public records, including with your city attorney, whether you say attorney-client privileged or not. The reason why you do want to say attorney-client privileged if it is relating to legal issues is because it signals that in reviewing that record for purposes of production, it will be identified as an exempt record and would not be produced or would not be produced in total. But it is a record, would have to be identified in response to a Public Records Act request. It would just not necessarily be disclosed fully.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Going forward, just Anne, going back to the point about one of your last slides, I made reference to the municipal ethics statute at Chapter 4223070. And I just want to go back and make reference to that, that the law says no municipal officer may use his or her position to secure special privileges or exemptions for himself, herself, or others. And the Supreme Court in a case out of Spokane County specifically said that this plain language does not limit the prohibition to only conflict of interest situations. The express purpose of this law was to ensure that government officials conducted business in a manner that advances the public's interest. And similarly with respect to the provisions relating disclosure of confidential information, including confidential information gained in executive session, that same law says that no municipal officer may disclose confidential information gained by reason of the officer's position, nor may the officer otherwise use such information for his or her personal gain or benefit. It's a tough one. You get elected to help others, but the law also limits your ability to help others by prohibiting you from using your position for personal gain or benefit of yourself or others.
And I see Scott has his hand raised. Oh, in your on mute. There you go. Nope, can't hear you.
There we go. Okay.
There you go.
I just wanted to ask Anne Bennett, sorry that I missed most of this, I have prior commitment. But did you answer the two questions that I sent you an email earlier today? Did you see those?
Yes, the one question you had about the state senate, would that change roughly? And then the next one was kind of that fact-finding. And I don't know that I answered that one specific, but I talked about it in general about when you're getting that information. And I think you had a specific RCW question and I think Steve covered that part. But if not.
You don't need to repeat it because I wasn't here. I'll just watch. I'll just watch. If I have further questions, I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Okay. But I think I did.
Anne, I just wanted to add, one, one of your slides, it was talking about, you know, preventing chain meetings, things like that. Just as a practical tip, many of you, well, you all know a lot of people in the community. And so some of them might contact you on your personal email about city business. Make sure that you have a disclaimer on your personal email that says, if this is about city business, please contact me at such-and-such, whatever your city email address is. And not that everyone follows a direction or pays attention. If they do contact you about city business, make sure that you forward that email on to your own city email address so that there is a record of that. And then you can respond for that. That's just a practical tip. I see that happen unfortunately all the time and inadvertently you become the repository for public records.
And is that the same as if they're sought out or, you know, whatever? They're walking the dog and someone approaches them or they see them in the grocery store and they say, hey, you know, what about this or that? What's the best way that they can protect themselves? Because that'll come up a lot.
Again, my advice is if they do that, make sure that the person understands, say, hey, listen, if this is city business, it'd be better if you contacted me here. I hope you understand that I'm not trying to push you off, but this is what I have, this is what I have to do. And then you can document that and report it back. So you don't have problems in the future where someone is claiming that it's a conflict of interest or claiming some sort of bias. Everyone can say, no, that was already reported. We already understand that. And you have a record of.
And I liked what I think what somebody said, that it's A, okay and perfectly fine to listen. I mean, that's part of our big jobs. We listen and make sure they know that we are extending that, but being careful then what we say beyond, so.
I'm sorry, just one question here. There's been a bunch of discussion around conflict of interest in a bunch of different directions. When we are aware that a topic is coming up for discussion and we want to suss out whether we are or not actually conflicted, I assume that as a council member, we can reach out to the city attorney one-on-one and say, I have this concern. Can you help me understand? Can you give me advice? Is that fair, unfair?
Yeah. How did most people present that forward for you, Steve? Is it?
Yeah, I think that that's a situation, just like was mentioned with respect to a quasi judicial situation. Those are situations where I do think you want to reach out to the administration or legal counsel, perhaps the clerk as well, to address those issues in order to get clarification, to understand where you may stand with respect to an issue.
So the first stop, first start would be with Dean. And then if there's, if it's not obvious, then we'll seek legal input to get back. Is that what I'm hearing?
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. Okay. You may not be the only one that's brought that up, so we may already have the answer at hand for you in this example, Dean H. All right. What other questions or comments did Anne's presentation and with the assist from the legal team at this portion of our agenda offer you? Okay. So then what we're going to do, oh, Anne, sorry.
I was just going to say thank you so much and I appreciate the interaction and I'm sorry that it went a little bit long, but I hope it was helpful to you. So thank you so much and I'm going to sign off so you can go into your next part of your meeting.
All right. Thanks, Anne. We know where to find you. Okay, yeah. We like it, but we don't want to talk to you too much. It's always a good thing. Okay. So thank you all. We're going to go into section number 4.1 of our executive closed session now. Looks like we have a few of our citizens were online. I appreciate them listening in. That's always wonderful. What we're doing in 4.1 is pursuant to the RCW 4230110.1. The city council will meet in executive session to discuss political, political, potential, excuse me, litigation. This part of the agenda is expected to last 30 minutes. We're going to keep ourselves to that timeframe and honor our agenda time. After which time, the city council will reconvene and is not expected to make a motion regarding the matters discussed. And so I think our good technician. And so I think our good technician, John's going to send us off into executive session land and.
Okay, it's recording now.
Thank you all. This is Mayor Mary Ann Kloss. It's 9:01 and we are in executive session. I am extending it 10 more minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You tell me when it's no longer recording?
Yep.
Okay, Mayor, we have lost council five.
I think that was the easiest way out, I think is what happened.
Yeah, I think you just.
Yeah.
All right, the recording has started. I think we are all back from executive session. This is Mayor Mary Ann Kloss. And as stated before, we are reconvening and we are not making any motions regarding the matters that were discussed. May I have a motion to adjourn for the evening?
So move, Steve.
Do you have a second?
Second, Kim.
Thank you. Any discussion about that? You're in, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We were unanimously leave. Thank you, gentlemen. Stephen.
Good evening.
Appreciate your time. Safe travels.